Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor, Squire Gentry, Squire Wyner.
Here.
Squire Paul here, Squire Dunn.
Here.
Squire Blackford.
Fred.
Squire Gill.
Here.
Squire Hammond.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Offering our invocation tonight is Pastor Bobby Carroll of Southside Christian Church. Thank you Pastor Carroll for joining us. You might turn on your mic there, please.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks and praise for all your mighty works. You Lord are loving and good and gracious. As we draw near to the day that we celebrate, giving thanks may be like the God who gave us every good and perfect gift. Would you grant us forgiveness when we fail to do? Thank you for creating us as a community, and by the way, thank you for leading us in your image, with this in community. We thank you for our wonderful county, we thank you for our blessed official churches, the families in Woodford County. As we give you thanks for our small community, we remember that Jesus was born in a little town. Where he grew up under the authority of local leaders and officials who managed the majority of his daily life. And with this, we are confident of your concern and your care, even for our community, and we thank you for that. So tonight, I lift up our local leaders to you, our judge, executive, our magistrates, our first responders, and all of the others that serve in so many ways, the people of our community. I pray that you would give them wisdom, give them strength, and grant them grace for the burdens that they carry. May they lead well, and may they approach their duties with compassion, justice, and love. Keep their hearts pure, their eyes turned, and their eyes turn to you as they work, as they do their duties, in the best interest of the people that they're called to serve. I pray for this meeting tonight. Give our magistrates wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefit and for your glory. We pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
So have a great meeting and happy Thanksgiving.
Beautiful prayer, wonderful. Do we have anybody seeking to address the court or the public, any public comment? Oh, I always do that. Alright, would you please rise if you're able?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What I should have said, is there anybody seeking to lead the Pledge of Allegiance? But seeing that there was none, I also felt like there was no public comment, but anybody is welcome to make a public comment. Also seeing none. We need to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes that anybody has? Any questions? No? Are there any objections to approving the minutes of our meeting on November 12th? If there are no objections, I will approve the minutes without objection. Our committee reports. The ordinance committee met prior to this meeting. Without objection, we allowed Nola Cerber, the event planner for the city of Versailles, to talk about It's a Wonderful Woodford Christmas. And I would just encourage everybody to look at all the great things and events that are being planned in downtown, in our little Hallmark City, also in the city of Midway, and all the things that are going on and around our community. It's going to be a great holiday season. Indeed, it already is. It's already begun. And I encourage everybody to shop local, spend your hard-earned money where people are working hard to earn money downtown and in our community. We moved on to a in-depth ordinance committee discussion. We talked about the text amendments and the map amendment for two particular properties. There was a recommendation of the ordinance committee to, that the fiscal court direct and authorize the county attorney to draft an ordinance amending Articles 3, 4, 5, and 9 of the ordinance, zoning ordinance for Woodford County as recommended by the planning commission. Is there a motion to direct and authorize the county attorney at the recommendation of the ordinance committee? Motion by Squire Blackford. Second by Squire Downey. Now I'd open up the floor for any discussion. I would just note, for those that did not attend the committee meeting, that this is, some of it is for readability, some of it is for the medical cannabis ordinance. And then there are some other things that I think particularly that are important related to notice and transparency as to planning and zoning items, and also consistency across our jurisdictions with the cities and the county. It may be imperfect, but it is a working, work in progress, and we can always amend it up and better in the future. But are there any questions or comments regarding the text amendment as presented? Again, this is to have the county attorney draft that ordinance. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Judge, I'll have that for the December 10th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
We also recommended from the ordinance committee to direct the county attorney to draft an ordinance relating to the zoning map amendment and preliminary development plan for 9042 and 9048 Clifton Road, as recommended by the planning commission. Is there a motion to adopt that recommendation? Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Gill. Question or dis? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries.
And Judge, I'll have that for the meeting as well.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
Our treasurers report.
My balance is sixteen million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and cents.
Anybody have any questions for the treasurer regarding the county attorney report? Seeing none. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Moving on, I have disseminated to each of you the draft Woodford County boot allowance policy as discussed in our last meeting. If there are no objections, I would entertain a motion to approve that policy for the road department, emergency management, and Woodford EMS, pending and contingent upon the final review and approval of the county attorney and myself for this new allowance policy. Second by Squire Downey.
Thank you. First of all, I just wondered, I didn't ask the last time when Freeman was here talking about this. Is this pretty much standard practice in other counties?
Yeah, he is. So I'll take that, Director Bailey. So I'm not sure actually if it's standard practice in other counties, but I do know this, that I went through the IRS code and I made sure that for, and I say it's not for, it's not only counties, it's private sector as well, that it is standard. And the IRS has some directions. If you have these policies, how to do them, and I created them into this policy.
And one other thing, there tends to be kind of a high turnover in EMS, and I'm just wondering if you buy them a pair of boots and they quit in a month, what do you, what happens? That's not addressed in the.
So these would be, these would be bought for individual employees to wear, and if required for safety, then we would do that. We could work on or amend the policy to, to change that for short-term employees or some sort of. Like, Squire Carl?
Hey, we had talked about this too.
Attorney, my concern.
I know that you typically do this for your full-time. They already have boots because they're working somewhere else. They're already working. So I don't think we buy them for.
Yeah, typically what we do is, most of our part-time, unless they are the students that are coming straight out of school that we're hiring out of our high school programs that we're doing. The bulk of all the other ones already have their boots with them. So very rarely do I buy boots. If you look at all the uniform allowances that we turn in every time we hire somebody, you will very rarely ever see boots on it. It's typically the longevity people or full-time staff. Those guys go through boots every couple of years. And we do have occasionally, once in a while, full-time, I mean a part-timer that comes in that we'll buy boots for. Like I said, they're typically, they don't work somewhere else. They're brand-new to the system and we bring them in. But like I was explaining the last time, we fill out a form with them for all their uniforms. When they leave, we get those back. And then we try to reuse them, what we can. Now, if the boots are worn, they've been wearing them for six months to a year, then most people don't want to wear somebody else's boots. And as the judge says, that's, that's just a loss. But very rarely do we ever have that. Like I said, it's typically uniforms that we can reuse that we try to match up if it's market and fit that. And to answer your other question, yes, all the other counties around us buy all their uniforms. They get a full allowance, and it's typically a lot more than what we do. Typically try to just purchase two uniforms. So we go buy two complete uniforms to start out with and provide them with jackets. And it's stuff that we, it's safety equipment is the way we look at it. We want them to be uniformed, look the same when they go in. It's a safety feature for the crew and the people that are down by their uniforms. The other thing is the boots, like we was talking before, that's the thing that protects the feet when they're standing in different types of floods and when they're in the trucks with blood, because the type of boots that are put in there, that will absorb through. So when they take their boots off, their socks are ripped. That's not what we're looking to. We want something that's a little more sturdy than the Gore-Tex boot is the one that we have found that has the certification that it is boneborn, effective.
Thank you, Director Bailey. Thank you, Squire Gill. Again, we can always amend policy if it's something we want to do in the future. I think to get it to where we can go ahead and provide for that, we do need the policy to be adopted by a motion. We have a, we have a motion on the table. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Bailey. Thank you, members of the court. And thank you to our paramedics and EMTs, emergency management, and road department. Alright, moving on. Speaking of emergency management, we have with us Deputy Russ Crabtree and his wife Lisa. And just recently, Russ was selected as one of twenty-six in the nation by the International Association of Emergency Managers. He was designated an associate, associate emergency manager by the International Association. And again, that is one of twenty-six in the entire United States of America. I'm extremely proud, as I know the fiscal court is, of our emergency management team, and I think I speak for the cities of Versailles and Midway as well, who they also serve, that we have a professional, well-trained, well-credentialed emergency management agency. And not only are they well-trained and well-credentialed, but they're highly experienced. Because unfortunately, Woodford County has had our share of floods, windstorms, and other disasters, which they have responded and worked in and done so in a way that has served the county with immense pride and integrity. I would say that Russ is also the consummate first responder. He's consummate professional. And he's a consummate county employee. Russ is somebody who deeply cares about his fellow first responders, all the members of our community, and he's somebody who does his job with the utmost professionalism. So it is my honor to recognize EM Deputy Russell Crabtree on his certification and designation as an associate emergency manager for meeting the criteria in the areas of training and examination for emergency management. So if we could, give a round of applause and appreciation to Deputy Crabtree.
I would like to thank the court for supporting the program. We're all lucky to work in Woodford County. And with the support of fiscal court, you know, we do have a program that's excellent, but it's due to jury's leadership and then, of course, the support from U.R.
Thank you, Deputy Crabtree. We appreciate you all very much. You're more than welcome to be excused to go. Alan would like to go with you to make the game, but we're working on it. We're working on it. Director Chandler, do you have anything additional?
Judge, the sticky note I put on there was inaccurate. Russ is one of twenty-six in Kentucky. Thankfully, there's more certified professionals in the U.S. than that. And as he said, you all empower us to do a job, and we couldn't do it without the support through budget appropriations and approval of training and just allowing us to do what we see is in the best interest of the community. And that comes from this room and the leadership in here. So thank you. Russ took the initiative. Obtaining that certification is not part of his job description. He took the initiative to do that by himself. He left out, there is a, there's an exam he had to have proctored. He was able to do that at no cost to anybody through a scholarship program that's paid by FEMA. And one of twenty-six in the state. That's pretty good. Again, thank you.
Well, and I apologize for that correction, but I will say he is one of the best in the United States.
Yep.
If not the world. Some say the universe, Director Chandler. Thank you. Thank you to our EM and for all you all do. We pray that there are no more disasters or emergencies. We know that that's probably unlikely, but we're so grateful to have you when we need you. Alright, moving on. Maintenance has the proposal for the service agreement for Johnson Controls, for sale dialers at the Woodford County Annex. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Carl. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Again, Nola Cerber for the city of Versailles delivered the Christmas update. And I'll move on to a very, very important update, the food pantry process. After a long process, very detailed process, there were forty-one applicants for the food pantry executive director that their screening committee through the food pantry met, which included the director Sharon Harden and other members and volunteers. And they narrowed that list of forty-one down to eleven. Of those eleven that were offered interviews, they were able to interview eight. Out of that eleven, due to the several that declined the interview, they took that number of eight and they screened that in additional interviews, down to three. Three finalists were then asked to interview with myself, council member Mary Bradley of the city of Versailles, Sharon Harden, Lawrence Royal Carl, and Bill Phelps. And two of those finalists completed the interview, one withdrew. And I can say that they were both very, very well-qualified. Would have made great executive directors, but it was unanimous, recommendation of the food pantry screening committee and the interview committee to hire Ashley Jackson as the next director of the Woodford County Food Pantry. I'm very pleased that I met with the new mayor of the city of Versailles, Laura Dake, and it is under the MOA, she had the ability to also offer the approval of Ashley as the new hire for the food pantry. And again, the mayor, myself, and council member Bradley, we had no, we didn't need to vote. But Ashley Jackson, Ms. Jackson would have absolutely had my full support of the decision, the choice to be the new director. So as a matter of confirmation, I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the Woodford County Food Pantry Board to hire Ashley Jackson as the director of the Woodford County Food Pantry, contingent upon the execution of any requirements in the MOA.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Taylor. Coming in from the Zoom, second by Squire Downey. For any discussions or questions on the floor. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. I would like to note that I said, contingent upon any of the requirements of the MOA being met, we believe all those requirements have been met. So that offer will be extended. Madam Clerk and myself have worked on the contract. It's a similar contract that Sharon Harden currently has with the city of Versailles and the fiscal court. But that will be due for approval now in our next fiscal court meeting. I would request the ability to approve that contract, contingent upon your review as the fiscal court and review of the county attorney as soon as it is finalized. Is there a motion to allow that authorization for same? Squire Blackford, second by Squire Downey. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 And the motion carries. I would just like to note that this is an important time in serving food needs in our community. The Woodford County Food Pantry could surely use your help, your donations, your time, your volunteer efforts. My understanding is, and this Cox may know better, but the food pantry will be providing turkeys for families during Thanksgiving. However, because of the limited budget, it will not be able to provide those for families through Christmas. And so I would just encourage folks, again, to give back to the food pantry. They're doing God's work. They're serving great needs. And there's a lot of needs out there, which means that they need more resources. So thank you to all our food pantry volunteers, everybody who donates, especially Sharon Harden and the amazing food pantry volunteers. Thank you, thank you. Moving forward, we have eight applicants for the Young and New Farmer Grant Program. We are putting that advertisement in the paper. That's a brief update, but we would like to get that out a little bit further and hope that we get some more applicants for that grant. Moving on to the general orders and unfinished business. I have no board appointments, but we do have the claims, the bills to be paid by this county. Are there any questions or comments about any of the bills to be paid? Are there any objections to same? Seeing none, I'll approve the bills to be paid without objection. We ratified the November fifteenth email vote approving the claim from the VISA for the fiscal court in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents. The VISA for the sheriff's office in the amount of two hundred and seventeen dollars, and Elon Financial Services in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Is there a motion to ratify same? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Carries. Same date, November fifteenth, we need to ratify the approval of claims for the VISA for the sheriff's office in the amount of seventy dollars, N.C. National Bank in the amount of six hundred and forty-nine ninety-nine, and the GAWS bill in the amount of one hundred and seventy dollars, which is using sheriff's office after forfeiture funds. And Squire Varner, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. We need to approve the transfers as presented. There was an additional transfer list. I give you all the opportunity to peruse that, review that, and ask any questions that you have. At that time. We also have a personnel order that you received today. It's one that I've been previewing since our last meeting, and let me just explain. Our human resources manager, Clifton, has been out on medical leave. And so we're, we're working through, onboarding new employees, working through employee concepts. So we have the job duties and descriptions as proposed for the animal care and control technician and administrator. I have Director Katner with us here. Uh, I have Director Katner with us here. Um, what we're looking at doing, and, and this is mainly to help us since we're so understaffed in the department, is creating a technician and administrative position to help with the care of animals, uh, the shelter, and, and dealing with the public and answering phones and those sort of things. So we have two individuals that I mentioned last time that are on the personnel order. One is part-time, the other individual, uh, wanted the, the opportunity to be full-time in that position. So we have a new position, the animal care and control technician slash administrator. And we need to approve that. I will say that Squire Gentry and Squire Carl, as members of the personnel committee, have been working with Officer Katner, uh, and have been, uh, abreast of all these, uh, changes. But I'd like for y'all to look at the job duties and descriptions. Um, it's very basic, it's basically, um, what an animal control officer would normally do without the officer duties. So you all would, you all be familiar with that. Um, in the personnel order, again, we have one candidate for, uh, part-time at eighteen dollars an hour and one candidate for full-time at twenty dollars an hour. Before we approve that, I'd like you to have the opportunity to digest that a little bit. Uh, we have the Millville Sewer Project. We need a motion to ratify the November twenty-twenty-four email vote approving the agreement between the fiscal court and the Bluegrass Ad for the administration of funds from the state for the Millville Sewer Project and authorize the judge executive to sign any and all documents related there to it.
Motion.
Motion, Squire Gentry. Second by Squire Gill. Seeing as we are ratifying, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Um, not to be confused with the Millville Waterline Project, um, we are waiting a, uh, draft contract from the Kentucky Engineering Group regarding, uh, that, uh, project. As soon as I have that, I will disseminate that to the court. Um, given that we have a new mayor in the city of Versailles, I'm working with the mayors, uh, the Veterans Commission, the American Legion, and our county clerk on further, uh, getting a budget, uh, estimate for the veterans license plate program, so I'll inform you all and keep you updated as we go from there. Um, again, we mentioned last time that there's five offices, approximately eighteen hundred veterans live in Woodford County. All of those would probably technically be eligible for license plates, but we're actually going to try to figure out how many veterans license plates are currently issued, and how many we anticipate in this program that we would issue, which probably would be much lower than eighteen hundred. Um, I'd give an update on the Woodford Reserve Road in McCracken Pike. Uh, there's a lot of stuff going on in the, uh, senior district, but Millville Water, Millville Sewer, McCracken Pike address, Woodford Reserve Road. So I'll give an explanation of this project in the last, uh, transportation budget, the General Assembly approved funding for a road that would essentially, uh, go above the visitor center at Woodford Reserve. Right now, that road goes in between the visitor center and the security. And Squire Gentry knows well, it is a safety concern. It is such a safety concern that, um, General Assembly looked to allocate money for a project to take that road above the visitor center to take out that safety, uh, issue in that curve. Um, you all have reviewed the right-of-way, uh, document, the contract between the state and the county regarding the McCracken Pike, uh, new road project right-of-way acquisition. They anticipate up to three hundred thousand dollars of potential right-of-way acquisition. And what we would do is, we are working with ground foremen on a, uh, contract that would have them reimburse us for the administration and purchase of any right-of-way, uh, through the other contract. So basically, Woodford Reserve would pay for the right-of-way acquisition, county would be the, uh, local government entity that would be working on that, just like we do with the water project or the sewer project. So, I'll be submitting to all contracts, like the draft, which would deserve ground for the county, and all, uh, transportation contracts between the cabinet and the county. I do anticipate taking that up on December tenth. We do have the proposed second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash ten, the eighteen to nineteen supplement code of ordinances. Is there a motion to approve second reading of same? Second by Squire Varner, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 This would be a second reading of that ordinance, having the eighteen to nineteen supplements to the code of ordinances for Woodford County, whereas American League Publishing Company of Cincinnati has, uh, completed those eighteen supplements, which, uh, which supplements contain all ordinances of a general nature enacted since publication last time of the code of ordinances of Woodford County. So be it ordained by this fiscal court that the eighteen to nineteen supplements to your local code of ordinances, uh, as submitted by American League Publishing Company are adopted by representatives set out, uh, in full in this ordinance. This being a second reading, this ordinance is final, although it does need to be published in summary form within thirty days. Thank you, Judge.
Is there a motion to the statute? Is there a motion to approve the contract renewal for Johnson Controls for the detention center? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Varner. Saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Madam Clerk, anything additional on the agenda that we have? Oh, yeah, yeah, we need that. So does anybody have any questions on those transfers that were presented, the additional list? Is there a motion to approve same as presented?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And the personnel order, is there a motion to approve the personnel order? Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Blackford. Okay, um, well, all those in favor of approving the personnel order, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And also, I approve the, uh, for these individuals, the animal control technician and administrator. Is there a motion to approve the Squire Carl? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank Squire Taylor for keeping up. Are there any other?
Judge, um, I don't, can everybody hear me?
Yes, can.
Okay, I'm just, uh, really excited to, to share that we, you all should have a, a confidential draft on our, uh, contract with all points broadband, uh, that next, uh, big step in moving forward on the broadband project. Uh, it's been, uh, uh, long-awaited, uh, long-awaited by so many of us, but a huge step forward, uh, and, and encourage everybody to take a look at it.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. Squire Gentry.
Oh, thank you for the speedy meeting. Now everybody can go watch the cat play. Thank you.
Squire Varner, sir.
Nothing, Judge, thanks.
Squire Carl.
Uh, everybody, happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family and eat, drink, and be merry. There you go.
Squire Downey.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, you mentioned it a couple of times, but I did just want to congratulate, uh, new, newly-appointed mayor, uh, Versailles, Laura Dake. Uh, so as someone who lives, works in my district primarily in the city, had a good working relationship with the previous mayor and share, uh, common interests, have worked with Laura for many years on the Big Park Improvement Project. So look forward to her tenure and working together, uh, and continuing our city-county relationships. And then, uh, the only other thing is that we do have the annual Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast next Saturday, December seventh, from eight to eleven, at First Christian Church.
Squire Downey. Squire Gill.
Uh, I just want to thank everybody for the help with the turkey trot last weekend. It was a two-mile fun run out of a hundred times, we, we, we had a hundred and fifty participants, and many volunteers and, and local business donors, we thank them. And the Good Giving Challenge starts today, and it runs through December third, I believe. Seven nonprofits in Woodford County are participating in the matching funds change each day. So you can go to BGgives.org and click on any one of those nonprofits in Woodford County. Thank you.
Judge, I want to thank Mayor Trigot and City Council, and Judge James K. in fiscal court, and, uh, Rich Pictor for the wonderful pickleball courts we have now and the pickleball community. So it's going to be well-used in the community.
Uh, you okay?
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Yes, uh, congratulations, uh, to newly-appointed, uh, Mayor Laura Dake. Uh, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and Squire Gentry, I have a much shorter drive home than you do, so I'm in better position.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. I, I, I do, I want to say one thing before we leave, and I think I speak for the fiscal court when I say this, that we want to take a moment to express our sincere and unwavering gratitude to Woodford County's employees. Your hard work, your dedication, your passion for public service inspires us all. Each day, county employees go, uh, above and beyond to serve our community, from the essential services, first responders, and all the hard work that goes on. They also provide innovation solutions to real problems.